Hello, I'm Ryan Clark, editor with the Modesto Bee, and welcome to tonight's election 2020 forum, featuring the candidates from Modesto City Council District One. They are Rosa Escutia Brayton, Jennifer Hidalgo, and Amin Vora. They are vying to replace Manny Graywall, who is leaving, and they are representing, hoping to represent, west, northwest Modesto. Moderating tonight's forum is Garth Stapley, our BOpions editor. He'll be joined by our Modesto Bee editorial board, managing editor Patty Guerra, Maria Figueroa, our research and information specialist, and myself. Garth, take it away.
All right, thank you for joining us, candidates. We're so pleased to have you with us. Good luck to each of you. We'll start with opening statements. They will be one minute each, and we'll begin with Amin.
Hi, my name is Amin Vora. You're a candidate for City Council District One in Modesto. I grew up in the city of Modesto. I've been here since 1980s, born in India, Bombay, India, to be exact. And I'm making history by being the first Muslim Indian-born candidate to run for an elected office in the city of Modesto. I have served on Planning Commission since 2015. Was the chairman of Planning Commission in 19. Currently serve on BCA Board of Zoning and Adjustment as a chairman. I've served on the Fair Housing Equal Opportunity Commissions for City of Modesto. I've also served, currently serving on the Interfaith Council of Stanislaus County, board member for the Islamic Center of Modesto, also on the Committee for City of Modesto's Chamber for State of Education and Business Events. You know, I have a master's degree in business and a passion to give back to my community. I grew up in this district, and you know, this is something that defines me. City of Modesto is home. You know, so I spend more than three quarters of my life here, and I like to give back by, you know, but being elected to this office would be really good for the city of Modesto and its residents.
Thank you very much, Amin Vora. Jennifer Hidalgo?
Yes, good evening, and thank you so much for inviting me to this forum. I am happy to be here. I'm Jennifer Hidalgo, and I'm a candidate for Modesto City Council District One. I'm a wife, mother, and longtime community advocate. I moved to Modesto from Mexico when I was 10 years old, and I've been here ever since. I chose to stay in my community and work for organizations and on projects that help the most underserved in our community. Even now, as a representative for one of our state legislators, I get to continue advocating for my community, and I get to elevate their voices to the state level. I'm running because I love my community, and I'm able to bring a different perspective into our city differing from what we've had in the past. I'm young, I'm energetic, and I love where I live. I want my children and others to be as proud to reside here as I am. And again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, and I hope to earn all of your support.
Thank you, thank you very much. Rosa Escutia Brayton?
Thank you. Thank you, Modesto Bee, for this opportunity to speak to you and to your viewership. My name is Rosa Escutia Brayton. I am running for Modesto City Council District One. I'm delighted to be endorsed by the brave men and women of the Modesto Firefighter Association. I'm married to Dr. Paul Brayton, and together we are raising two beautiful boys here in Modesto. I'm in my second term as Modesto City Planning Commissioner. Previously, I worked for more than 25 years in public and private sectors, including serving in a Democratic and a Republican administrations. I have immense experience in community engagement, and what motivates me to run for the seat is that I have a love, a love for Modesto, and I have a passion to serve. And I do hope that I'm able to apply both these qualities and my experience in helping Modesto be a great place to live. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's remarkable to have three people that have engaged so much in the community, and we appreciate your service, each of you. The Modesto City Council, frankly, lately has been deeply divided, and some city council members have even openly admitted that they don't trust each other. Is unity on the council important? And if so, what would you do to encourage cooperation? One minute each, we'll start with Jennifer.
Yeah, so absolutely, it's important to be united, and at the very least, to be open to ideas and really look, you know, at projects and at each situation with an objective mind. And that's something that I would bring. I've worked with a lot of different organizations and collaborated with a lot of different elected officials and community members who all have different, differing opinions. All of the community outreach that I've done, depending on the project, is not always well-received by the community. And so I am able to listen to every point of view and really explain in very objective terms why I support or I oppose a specific project or why I'm championing a specific project. So I think it's important to come to the council with that mindset, where I am, I want to work with everybody on the city council, regardless of political affiliations and personal feelings towards one another. I have a lot of experience, again, in collaboration, and it's something that is very important with any board that you're on, because really, I mean, we should all be colleagues and should be able to work to achieve our common goals. Ultimately, we're all there because we care about our city and we care about our community, so.
Thank you, Jennifer. Rosa, is unity on the council important? And if so, what would you do to encourage cooperation?
It's critical. Unity amongst any governing body is critical for the collective good. We all might come to the table with different personalities, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the collective agreement not only benefits the governing body, but it represents and benefits the community as a whole. So that is one thing that I definitely bring to the table. I'm not only skilled in being able to be a bridge builder collaborator, but I'm skilled in mediation, in arbitration, where I can bring diverse issues to the table and collectively have a conversation for the end result to benefit the collective good. So that's one thing I've been able to do in many of the commissions and boards I've served on, and that's something that I look forward to being able to bring to the table to the city council.
Very good, thank you. Amin, same question, unity and cooperation?
It is absolutely important for unity and way to get and achieve anything on the agenda. In the past few years, we have been the divisiveness in the city council itself. I have reached out personally to all the city council members with the mayor, you know, finding out exactly what's causing this device, besides divisiveness. For that reason, I've been endorsed by Mr. Tony Madrigal, the council member currently from the district, I believe, Westside District. You know, this is not about the left wing or the right wing, Democrats versus Republicans. I mean, that's why this seat is a nonpartisan seat. At the end of the day, our main goal and agenda should be that what is this, what is the matter in front of us? What is on agenda? How is the question in front of us benefiting our city and its residents? And that should be the question answered, regardless of what party affiliation one carries. I think that in mind will be able to solve a lot of our problems that we are facing currently as a city.
Thank you very much. Maria?
Okay, and coming off of that, more questions about the city council. We're going to start with Rosa. So Rosa, can you give a letter grade eight through F to the Modesto City Council for their work over the past two years?
Yeah, I would give them a B. I would give them a B. I truly believe that the city has done their best in the past, and they're doing their best right now in the time of crisis with COVID. I think, I think that to, they can't do it alone. They need to do it with collaboration with, with the community, with the county. And it's, it's challenging to, to be, to deal with diverse issues, but I think they, they, they're doing their best. I know in times of COVID, they, like everyone else, is receiving multiple conflicting information. And just like everyone else, they're doing their best to navigate through these unprecedented times. What I would do differently is I would immediately bring a cross-communication and coordination, especially in underserved communities, because everyone's voice should be heard. And, and I think this is critical to the, the success of the city council. Thank you.
Okay, same question to Amin. Give a letter grade to the Modesto City Council over the last two years and explain.
You know, I, to be honest with you, I would give them a C. And reason being is not that they're not all passionate about their districts or about the city. I think they just could not come to an agreement as to what they were facing. I feel like there, there could have been a lot more cooperation amongst themselves to achieve a lot more than they have done so far. And the way I would change that is that, look, I have no hidden agenda. I have no business entities or any business mindset. I don't own any business in my district or in City of Modesto. However, the way I would approach this is that, look, what is, what is, is that, what is it one thing that we're trying to achieve? And how is this one, one benefit? How is this benefiting our city and its residents? And I think that's the best approach, because, look, again, this is, this is not about, you know, a party affiliation. This is all about for our future generation, for my kids' generation and their future, how do we make our city better than what we have today? And I think that's the best approach. And if we, if we go with that approach, I think we'll be able to achieve a lot more than they have in the past two years.
Okay, and same question, Jennifer, do you need that to be repeated?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
So I would also give them a C. I believe that it's been very counterproductive, the way that all of the fighting has gone down. And that, you know, when you come outright and say that you just don't trust somebody, so you're not going to vote on a project just because a specific council member suggested it, I think that's a problem. So I think continuing to foster relationships within the city council and really working to mend those bridges is going to be really important. But also, I feel like there hasn't been enough outreach to our communities. We have great community-based organizations that are already doing the outreach into our communities, such as Catholic Charities and the Ptolemy River Trust Project. They are doing the outreach to the most underserved in our community so that they can get involved in the process for Modesto. And I think we need more of that, because I just don't think that we've been really successful at getting community input for the majority of projects that we've had, or sufficient community input. So that's something that I would do differently as well.
Very good, thank you. All right, candidates, race relations and police reform have been in the news quite a bit lately. A couple of weeks ago, several community groups here called for the establishment of a citizens panel specifically to oversee the Modesto Police Department. Would you support the creation of an independent civilian review board for the Modesto Police Department? One minute each, we'll start with you, Mr. Vora.
You know, and you're absolutely right. There has been, you know, a negative, so to speak, media coverage on the police. And, you know, in our beautiful country, we have over, way over 150,000 police officers throughout the country. And I guarantee you, 99.9% are honest, hardworking, law-abiding, you know, caring for their community, police officers. Having said that, rather than, you know, and then there's lots of talks about defunding police and so on and so forth. I would not even go that route, because that's absolutely absurd. What I would do, I would definitely recommend an oversight committee, especially when it comes to police-involved shooting or police brutality case, so to speak, when it comes about. I think there has to be an oversight, especially in these cases, for them to be investigated, rather than an internal committee from the police department who has a bias, so to speak, towards their own agency. I think that's much needed, but, you know, as far as defunding or taking funds away from the police, I think that's absurd idea. You know, they are forerunners for our community. They provide safety and security so that we can sleep as sound at night. I think that's more needed. I think more police officers, if anything, are needed. More community offices are needed, so they can be engaged with the community, engaged. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hidalgo, same question. Would you support the establishment of a citizens review panel?
I do support that. I think a civilian oversight committee would really go a long way in providing transparency and local accountability. Having the ability to implement meaningful policy changes is important for our community. At the moment, our police department investigates its own officers. The current process makes making a complaint against an officer really intimidating for a lot of people. But having an oversight commission and an independent auditor makes this process much easier. This committee would not take the chief of police's ability to discipline his own officers away, but it would allow for more transparency as redacted misconduct investigation reports would be available to the public. So the auditor and commission will be able to investigate systemic problems and then report their findings to, and policy recommendations to the city council. This would be a fantastic step in creating additional trust between our community and the law enforcement that protects us. So I would absolutely support the proposed civilian oversight commission.
Thanks very much. Same question to you, Ms. Escutia Brayton, independent civilian review board for the Modesto Police Department.
Thank you. One of my core platforms is the importance of public safety and safer communities. By the same token, I believe in transparency. I would not be against the concept of an advisory board, having a civilian participation on that advisory board. But again, by the same token, it's critical that all impacted be at the table, including the police. It is only then that we can have an agreeable and sustainable solution to a not-perfect system.
Okay, this question, I guess, who do we start with, Garth? Start with Rosa? Okay.
It's Jennifer's turn to start next.
Jennifer, okay, Jennifer, we'll start with you. What more should city council, city hall do to help businesses recover from COVID-19?
So I think, you know, the county has spent some of the CARES Fund Act, CARES Act funding to help small businesses recover. I know that the Modesto chose to spend all of the CARES Act funding to pay for salaries for our police and fire departments instead of using our general fund, which I do, I understand the reasoning behind it. They don't, you know, we are in very uncertain times, but I think that some of that money should have been utilized for the purposes of helping our small businesses further, because they're the ones that are suffering the most. You know, a lot of them have been shuttered, or their capacity has been greatly reduced, and they still have to pay their full rent. So I think some of that money should have been utilized to assist our small businesses. But again, I understand it's, it's, they're difficult decisions, but, you know, I think that money should have, some of it should have been used for our businesses as well.
Okay, Rosa, same question. What more should we do to help businesses recover from the pandemic?
Yes. I feel strongly that the business, small business, is the backbone of our economy. Therefore, we should, as a smart economy, do everything possible to support businesses. I, I, I support the city in choosing to be one of many cities in San Luis Obispo counties, to write our governor, to encourage him to open up our economy sooner, making, alleviating the pressure of small businesses barely struggling. Many are not only struggling, but they may not reopen unless we move quickly. One of the solutions that I think is very creative is in closing down J Street or modifying it in some way so our restaurants can come out and provide commerce and service to our constituents. This is one of many ways that we could help them strengthen their revenue source and ultimately help Modesto be a vital economic factor.
Okay, and Amin, same question.
You know, to be honest with you, I think we could have done a lot more to help our small businesses. Again, they are the backbone of our, you know, economy, not just in our city or county, but entire nation. These guys are the ones who are the biggest job creators in the entire United States. Having said that, lots of the small businesses, especially moms and pops, business owners, they missed out on the opportunity to apply for the CARES Act funding. They lost that funding to big businesses. They did not know how to navigate through the channels or do the paperwork, you know. In the first, when the CARES Act first came out, they were going through the big banks such as Bank of America. And so if you are not a member or a town holder of Bank of America, you kind of missed out that opportunity. I feel like a lot more needs to be done. We need to help these small businesses, especially when another bill is to be passed, hopefully soon. If that happens, there's still $650 billion left over from the first CARES Act. I think that money could be utilized and at least help these small businesses apply for those loans, and especially when it comes on for the second go-round. I think we need to be ready and help them navigate through the, you know, gruesome chat, you know, process of applying for these loans and help them sustain themselves so they can, we can move forward and build their economy again. I think, again, we need to open up the businesses so that we can, you know, with social distancing in mind, and get going again.
So, Modesto's received hundreds of complaints about businesses violating COVID health orders, and the city followed up by contacting 130 businesses, but has issued few, only a few cease and desist orders. Some say the soft-handed approach is not fair to the businesses that are responsibly following guidelines. Should Modesto do more to invoice, to enforce COVID safety rules? And Rosa, please.
Well, like, at this time, our businesses are under a tremendous amount of stress. Again, like I said, many are in peril of closing, some for good. And this is unfortunate, this is sad. Inflicting additional parameters and perhaps fines may not have these businesses, we may not have these businesses in the future. So therefore, I feel that, in my opinion, the small business owner, we need to do everything possible to help them. And, and we need to find creative ways to help our businesses stay open and not present additional challenges for their, for their solvency. I would support repeated warnings or helping them create ideas on how they can function and contribute to our community and contribute to a strong economy.
Amin, what, should, should Modesto do more to enforce COVID safety rules on businesses?
In the, in the current pandemic crisis, I think safety should be at utmost importance. Having said that, when you're enforcing these rules, you also need to be more of an educator, so to speak, you know. So not only enforcing, but also, you know, educating the business owners as to what safety guidelines they can accommodate for their, for their serving clients, right? You know, social distancing, whether having you, you know, do takeouts, depending on the business. But I think education is a lot more, you know, important than just enforcing the rules itself. If you educate the business owners and see how this could benefit them for the long run as far as them keeping open, I think that would benefit them.
Jennifer?
So I think the pandemic, well, the pandemic has caused an extreme burden for our small businesses. I think the current process of educating a business, rather than finding them right off the bat, is important. We need to give all of our businesses a chance to comply with local and state mandates, especially because it seems like the information and directives are constantly changing, so it can get very confusing as to what a business can and cannot do. But I do think we need to be following the mandates. So, you know, the sooner that we comply and we get this pandemic under control, the faster that we can open our economy. So again, I agree with, you know, my fellow candidates that we do need to do a lot of education and outreach and do the fines as a last resort. But definitely, we should be holding our businesses accountable.
Thank you.
Okay, COVID has not been kind to retail businesses, including Vintage Fair Mall, which is in the district you hope to represent. Between the pandemic and before that, just the internet, big-box stores and small shops alike face an uncertain destiny. What does the future hold for the mall? And we'll start with Mr. Vora.
You know, I, I, I worked at the mall at a young age, so I liked the mall. And I feel like, you know, that is the place to go. My wife and I, we still go to the mall. We like to, you know, feel things before we purchase. So even in this day of online shopping, so to speak, I feel like, you know, the mall is, defines Modesto, so to speak, especially when it comes to Christmas time, you know, Thanksgiving time, Halloween. It may, you see the entire population of Modesto, you know, pretty much at the mall. And I feel like, you know, that is something that's very necessary for our, our economy to grow. I feel like there should be more shopping centers, more brick-and-mortar stores. And we, as citizens of Modesto, we definitely need to support our own retailers in Modesto so that we can flourish as a city.
Thank you. Ms. Hidalgo, what is the future of the mall?
So it's really hard to say with certainty, but one of the ideas is, you know, the mall was initially envisioned to be not just a shopping center, but also a living, living space. So if we could have something creative where we can put housing in big-box stores and portions of it, we can create additional units and increase our housing stock, and that would make a more vibrant area for our community. We'd have people that are living where they can shop, they can just go downstairs and spend money in our local economy. So I think, you know, we can get really creative with what we have. Like Mr. Vora mentioned, the internet had already really reduced the amount of, you know, shopping that was done at brick-and-mortar stores. So I think we need to be creative, and we really need to be looking at these spaces so that we can reduce sprawl and increase our housing units.
Thank you. And Ms., I'm sorry, Ms.
Escutia Brayton, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I have the same problem.
I apologize. And, you know, even though COVID presented tremendous challenges for the entire economy, and the mall is no different, it also presented an opportunity to do, to have a different approach. It's all about, in my opinion, a smart, smart economic development, bringing in creative solutions. I lived in other communities that have also had issues or challenges with their malls, and they have successfully renovated them to have a different look and feel. And now they are tremendously successful and a contributor to their local economies. I think we could do that with our mall. It's in a perfect venue, it has, it's next to the freeway. So by bringing in collective minds, investors, and smart economic development ideas, I think we could have fantastic venue for a, a place that provides immense economy and much-needed jobs to our local communities.
Okay, this is a short answer question, so 30 seconds or less, probably won't even be that long. What is your personal approach to wearing a mask in public? We'll start with Jennifer.
So I believe in science, and so I wear a mask wherever I go. And, you know, I haven't gone out very much, but it's courteous to wear a mask. At the wor, at worst, you're uncomfortable for a few minutes, and at the best, you're saving a life. And so I'm not willing to infect a community member, you know. And so I believe in mask usage, and I believe everybody should wear one as well.
Okay, Rosa?
It's a state mandate to wear a mask in public, and I support that. I wear one in public. And I know that the data is very conflicting with mask-wearing. However, even if there's a small chance to wear a mask, that wearing a mask might save a, a, a life or may minimize the transmission of COVID, then it's worth wearing. So wear a mask, period.
Amin?
You know, you tend to lead by example, right? So I, I'm a CEO of an advanced college where we teach our nursing students how to be the greatest nurses in the world. And having said that, we, we, we make sure that every student that enters the campus has a mask on. And I would lead that, you know, I am the first one, when I walk in, I have a mask on. When I get in the car, I have a mask on. And seeing that, my three-year-old daughter, anytime she gets in the car, the first question she'll ask is like, Dad, where's my mask? So even though she's not required to, we make sure that she has a mask on, and that's the right thing to do.
Okay, this is a one-minute answer. What should city leaders do specifically to help promote downtown Modesto? And we'll start with Rosa.
The one thing they should do immediately is open, be open for community dialogue. I know that there's a letter being circulated that encouraged or demanded that the city council modify or close J Street so that the restaurants can come out and provide services to the community. We must do that. I think the downtown restaurant businesses are vital to the success of Modesto. And we need to continue with the revitalization of downtown. I know that there's recently been a, a, a task force put together to address ways of modifying and beautifying downtown. I was part of those workshops. I think we need to implement most, if not all, of those decisions and find financial avenues to making those, to implementing them. I think Modesto downtown has immense opportunity, and I would really support. And if you liked it, I would put my effort into ensuring that that gets done. Thank you.
Thank you. Amin?
You know, we've come far away from what downtown Modesto used to look like in 1980s. Give an example, where City Hall, there used to be a motel there, and it was a rundown motel, and people were scared to go to downtown. So from that to now, we have improved a lot, but there's a lot more needs to be done, especially with their downtown improvement project that's on, on work, so to speak, with the new baseball field, you know, that, that is, these in-design plans. But I would go one step forward. We have a beautiful, pristine, you know, riverfront. We haven't done much with it. We, you know, and when I got into city plan, you know, planning commission, at the time, you know, our mayor, Mr. Garrett Marsh, I told him that right away, I said, sir, why don't you guys do something with our riverfront? I mean, I compared that to San Antonio Riverwalk, which is just a canal. And so a lot more needs to be done. We have such a big potential in Modesto, and we need to do every single thing we can so that we provide more housing units in Modesto, more places for people to go around, bike trails, parks, high-end condos, boat ramps, whatever that needs to be. We have an A train coming, you know, but that is not enough. You have an A train coming, you have a terminal there, but what, what is that going to do? We need to support all those commuters potentially moving from Bay area to Modesto with nice housings, with both baseball parks to go to eateries outside. So there's a lot more needs to be done. I will support downtown improvement project for sure.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So I'm a big proponent of transit-oriented development, especially with the A train coming down into downtown Modesto. I think Modesto- I think Modesto has done a lot over the past few years to make our downtown more vibrant, and we can really add to that vibrancy. And we can, you know, cut the red tape and be able to put housing on top of existing businesses so people can live in downtown. And it would just make our downtown so much more vibrant if we can continue to advocate for our businesses and doing all of these great projects that Modesto is doing, you know, like such as the First Month Fridays and all of the great events that we have downtown would really go a long way, you know, past the pandemic. I agree with Rosa that we do need to help our businesses now in downtown. It's just hard because people are not going out as much. They don't have the money or, you know, they're afraid for their health. But looking past the pandemic, I think we need to continue working on our downtown and working with the downtown general plan as well. So transit oriented development, I'm a bit big advocate for that. And that's something that I would really advocate for on the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the idea of an urban limit line around Modesto was recently raised, and it was quite controversial, especially in terms of the anticipated effect on Wood Colony. The north section of Wood Colony likely would be added to District One, which you seek to represent, if it were annexed to the city. The city needs more jobs. Wood Colony, much of the people there don't really want to become part of Modesto. So we have a conflict here. Should part of Wood Colony be annexed to Modesto and developed? Amin, it's your turn to go first.
You know, to be honest with you, this issue has come up a lot, even in the past on planning commission, this issue was raised. I I feel like we need to come to discussion with the residents of Wood Colony. They have been there for some in some instances. This is a third generation of those folks growing there. It's an almond, you know, prime location, so to speak. They've been farming there for, you know, generations. I feel like in order for us to even think about annexing north part of the Wood Colony into Modesto, a serious discussion needs to happen. We need to sit down on a round table, so to speak, and, you know, kind of come up with a plan as to what is an agreeable term, if any, if they decide to, with the residents of Wood Colony. This is something we cannot force on those residents. I feel like, you know, a dialogue and an agreement, that would that would be more resourceful, more useful as a city. I mean, we we went through the same issue with the Salida residents when Garrett Marsh wanted to annex or at least have a conversation with the Salida residents to annex Salida into Modesto. And I feel like, you know, serious conversations need to happen. And I'm not the one who's going to say, yes, for sure, we're going to annex Wood Colony into Modesto. I think a serious discussion needs to happen with them.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I don't support annexing Wood Colony into Modesto. I think that there are a lot of county pockets within the city of Modesto where the city just grew, you know, around, that we need to develop and help annex those portions first before we think about annexing anything else. Furthermore, Wood Colony has a lot of really prime agricultural land that we need to preserve because, you know, as we've grown, we continue to take that land that is prime farming, and you can never get that back once it's gone. So I think that working, and again, transit oriented development, I think we need to grow up and not out and really reduce our sprawl. But again, it's, you know, Wood Colony does not want to be annexed. And I think we should be saving our agricultural land and really grow up instead of out. So I don't support that.
Thank you very much. Rosa, Wood Colony?
While respecting the opinion of everyone and definitely appreciating the 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 beautiful agricultural territory that Wood Colony represents, I do support the urban limit line. I do support bringing new jobs and much needed jobs to the Modesto area. I do support smart growth. I think if done wisely and respectfully, I think everyone can benefit from the annexation of Wood Colony into our greater Modesto family. So I would be an advocate for it.
Thank you. Patty, do you want to ask the next question?
Sorry about that. Please share ideas for helping disadvantaged areas in other parts of the city, such as West Modesto and the airport neighborhood. And we'll start with Jennifer.
So again, I I feel that these county pockets have been really overlooked. And there's no sidewalks. I've heard of, you know, children, they have to walk in the middle of the road during the winter because the sides flood. And again, I I understand that it's not simple. It's not cheap to annex these portions of the city. But I think that we need to continue having these conversations and working toward providing these neighborhoods with the infrastructure that they need in order to be safe. There's community based organizations that are helping these communities and getting their input. But we need to help them along with their, you know, with their projects and with their their advocacy work. So there was the walking school bus that the community got funding for to help these children have a safer way to school. But again, if we don't at least start to have these conversations, I think I feel that, you know, annexing county pockets and helping bring infrastructure to these areas gets brought up once in a while, and then it just keeps getting kicked down the road. Again, it's not simple. It's not cheap. We're going to need to collaborate with our county and our state and federal government in order to bring the resources to really get this project going. So, you know, that's something that I would advocate for.
Thank you. Rosa, what are your ideas? Please repeat the question. Certainly. So please share helping disadvantaged areas in other parts of the city, such as West Modesto and the airport neighborhood.
I, all areas of Modesto deserve to be represented at the highest level possible and be given the level of services that everyone benefits from. West Modesto and other areas are no different. We definitely need to leverage the programs and services afforded to us by the county, by the state, by the federal government to help these disadvantaged communities. Also, I think that these communities need to be represented at the discussions that the city council has on their behalf. So it's critical that we engage, whether it's in their language, whether it's in their backyard, have them be part of the solution. Without their input, a amicable, sustainable solution is not possible. So if I were to be elected, I would be an advocate for bringing all stakeholders to the table to have a solution that works for all.
Thank you. Amin, what are your ideas for helping disadvantaged areas of the city?
You know, I have a soft heart, soft corner, so to speak, for the west side of Modesto. I went to school in west side of Modesto. I went to Modesto High School. And a friend of mine, who's currently an attorney, me being a CEO of an advanced college, we were always told that when we went to Modesto High that, you know, your 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 future is not that bright. And I proved them all wrong, and so did my friend. So I know that I know that I know that area, including the east side, which is the airport district. I feel like that those two neighborhoods have been overlooked and neglected for years. And I feel like, you know, more needs to be done by inviting, you know, Barea companies to set up shops there so at least we can offer them an opportunity of higher paying jobs. And I, you know, I don't think any elected politician in Modesto has ever reached out to the Googles or the Facebooks or the Intels of the world and tried to negotiate something or incentive for them to come and set up shop here. And I will change that if I take the seat.
Okay, we'll start with this question with Rosa. What are some solutions to bring in more affordable housing to Modesto? One minute.
Okay, yes, indeed. The lack of housing, especially affordable housing, is a very important issue affecting Modesto today. We need to do everything possible to make available affordable housing for all Modestians. As planning commissioner, I voted to allow the development of accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as in-laws quarters, as well as I voted for the Kansas House. And this is the conversion of an old motel into transitional housing for the homeless. These are just two examples of the productive ways that we can add supply to the high demand for housing in Modesto. This problem is not unique to Modesto, and we must leverage every single resource that the county, the state and the federal has to to resolve it.
Okay, same question. Amin, what are some solutions to bring more affordable housing to Modesto?
It's a wonderful, wonderful question. And I feel like not only affordable housing, but, you know, even market price housing is needed currently. Modesto, we're facing a housing unit shortage of almost 25,000 units. Having said that, you know, mixed use properties is one way, where not only do you allow affordable housing on the top, but those residents on living on the top also be able to, you know, given an opportunity to work downstairs, so to speak, in in the in the businesses that will be established on the bottom. So this is a model that has been followed in Dublin, Pleasanton, Livermore area, and it's working wonders for them. So I feel like, you know, we we definitely need to provide more affordable housing. Junior dwelling units is one way where you're allowed to build now up to five square foot units in your backyard, and you're able to rent those for long term purposes. That's one way of solving. And just like Ms. Rosa said, I did also vote in favor of those junior dwelling unit projects.
Okay. Yeah, same question, Jennifer.
Yes, so affordable housing is not a one size fits all. Well intentioned policies have limited the ability for our local governments to make housing affordable for single and multifamily homes. The demand is much greater than the supply. And with Modesto growing and the expected growth in population, we should be able to provide people with a house to call home. This can be done by the removal of the red tape that hasn't allowed for commercial spaces with more than one floor to be used as residential spaces above commercial spaces, like in our downtown area. Again, we can make Modesto a more vibrant, transit oriented city, especially with the ACE train that's on the horizon. In neighborhoods, we need to be able to fill vacant homes with single and multifamily units. Affordable housing also includes the repeal of the Costa Hawkins Act to allow local governments to do their job in providing affordable places for families to live and thrive. We need proactive, sustainable solutions and not quick fixes, and it's going to take all levels of government to make it work.
Very good, thank you. Candidates, these next, this next series of questions require rapid responses, only a few seconds each. It's not necessary to go into detail unless you really feel like you want to. Okay, so there are seven people running for mayor of Modesto. Who do you support? Amin?
You know, I feel like Mayor Ted Brandall needs another chance to accomplish what he has set out for himself. So I would support Mr. Ted Brandall.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I'm looking forward to working with a mayor that has a vision and provides a transparent budget process. I have yet to decide who I'm backing and with my vote, and I look forward to learning more about each candidate.
Thank you, Rosa.
I haven't decided who I'm going to support. I likely hold off until the runoff. However, I am confident that I could work very well with anyone elected.
Thank you. Who do you support in the race for Modesto City Council seat, District Three? Jennifer?
Again, I've been really focused on my race, but as Rosa mentioned, I will work with anybody who is elected. And again, I haven't made specific decisions on who I'm backing for the other races either.
Thank you, Rosa. Same question, District Three?
Same response, I apologize. I haven't decided who I'm backing for that. But I am confident that if elected, I would work very well with whoever's selected as well.
Thank you. Same question, Amin?
I am undecided on the District Three race yet. So once I decide, I will definitely inform you guys.
Very good. Again, rapid response. Who do you support in the race for Modesto City Council, District Six? Rosa?
Same response.
Amin?
I have not decided on any district races as of.
And Jennifer?
I'm sorry, same response as well.
And you call yourselves politicians?
No, no, not necessarily.
We are community advocates.
Rapid response. Who do you support in the race for Congressional District Ten? That's Josh Harper and Ted and Ted House. Jennifer?
I am supporting Josh Harper on this race.
Rosa?
I haven't decided as of yet.
Amin?
Josh Harper, he's a good friend.
Thank you.
Name something, name something positive about outgoing Councilman Manny Graywall, something he did, and then where you might, where you think that he could have done better. We will start with Amin.
You know, I had pleasure of serving with Manny on Interfaith Council of San Salvador County, in which interactions I learned a lot. He is very heavily involved in the Sikh community. He brought the Sikh community to the forefront, so to speak. But I I feel like, you know, the shortcomings in last two years, I feel like they're in it, not just with Manny's seat, I think the whole entire council. I feel like had they come together, they could have accomplished a lot more than they have in the last two years.
Okay. Jennifer?
So Manny Graywall has been a very respected member of the city council, and you can tell that he really cares about our community. And I think he, you know, really reached out to the business community and was able to, you know, bring bring that to the council.
Any areas of improvement?
Well, most recently, I think he should have taken more precautions with COVID than he did. As a leader in our community, he should have led by example. And his actions didn't always convey the seriousness of the pandemic. So that's just one thing that I think he could have worked on.
Thank you. Rosa?
I do believe that Manny has done an excellent job in the last four years being our District One representative. I'm truly honored to be endorsed by him. One thing that I like about Manny, and I've heard this by a lot of other people, from a lot of other people, and it's very simple. And that is that he is so quick and so responsive to responding to constituents' texts and calls. I call him, he calls me back, and I've heard that from others. And although it sounds simple, I think it speaks to his integrity and his commitment. One thing I think Manny could have done better, and you know, it really wasn't a possible task, is unite the city council. But I think he he did his best. And again, it's quite a challenge. I don't know if anyone could have actually succeeded at it.
Thank you, Rosa.
Thank you.
Okay, we've come to our final question before closing statements. And this is fairly straightforward. What most sets you apart from your opponents in this race? And we'll start with.
I'm sorry, is that me? Okay, I am from community for community. I chose to stay here after graduating from college, and all of my professional and my volunteer experience is here in this community. Working with nonprofits and on projects that directly serve this community has really allowed me to collaborate with and foster relationships with our fantastic community based organizations and our elected leaders. You know, our community based organizations have really been doing the work of advocating for our community for years. And as an elected official, I'd be able to elevate their voices to a higher level. Now, as a representative for one of our state legislators, I continue to advocate for our community, and I work with all of our elected officials and all of our community based organizations on a regular basis and at every level. I have worked and continue to work with our community and our elected officials to accomplish common goals and help our community thrive. And so I think that's what sets me apart the most.
Thank you. And Rosa, what sets you apart from your opponents?
What sets me apart is my my 25 years of proven experience of public policy and community engagement. I have firsthand experience working with local and state policymakers. I'm known as someone who gets along very well with other people. I'm known as a bridge builder with regard to collaboration and communication. I'm organized, I'm punctual, I'm professional. And I'm someone who demonstrates respect and care for people of all walks of life. Lastly, I encourage voters to elect someone who takes care of Modesto. And I am a registered Democrat, but above all else, I'm I'm a Modestian first. So that truly is critical and important and what sets me aside from other candidates, I believe.
Thank you. And Amin?
You know, after I finished my masters, I had opportunity and offers to go work in L.A., San Francisco, even in Silicon Valley. But I chose to stay back. I chose to stay back because this is, again, this is the, this is the city that truly defines me. And I wanted to make sure that I give back to the community. And that's why I got myself involved with the Interfaith Council of San Salvador County since 2013. That's why I got myself involved with the chambers, the state of education and business committees. That's why I got myself involved in the planning commission and board of zoning and the human relations and equal opportunities. I I even now, I participate in the Cambodian community, where I go and advocate and teach and offer a bright future, so to speak, to the young youth who were at risk at the gang violence or what have you. I show them that, look, I grew up, I went to Modesto High, I know what you guys are going through, and this is what you can become. Most of these kids who come from these broken families, broken homes in this bad neighborhoods, they feel like their their future is just stuck here. And I want to show and I want to teach them that this is not it. You can be. You can be the best, you can be who you ever want to become in this country. As long as you put yourself through it, as long as through the hard work and dedication. If I can become the CEO of the company and if I can run for election, you know, sky's the limit for you. So that's what I want to do. That's what I want to instill in my kids. That's what I've done so far. I raise a wonderful family. I have wife, three kids here. And I will make sure that my kids also stay back and give back in this community that they call home.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's time for closing statements. Um, Patty, I'm going to ask you to back out since Amin seems to have dropped to the bottom and we'll get back with you very soon. Closing statements, one minute each. We'll start with Rosa, please.
We need to stop the bickering at city council. If elected on day one, I will apply my over twenty-five years of proven leadership experience. I will utilize my firsthand experience in local and statewide policy engagement to leverage relationships and resources for the benefit of Modesto. I will work tirelessly for you and for your families. I know that we can do better. I respectfully request your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosa. Amin?
Sorry about that, I keep getting called for. You know, I, again, this is, this is a city that, that has given a lot to me and my family and has given us immense opportunities coming from India. My uncle used to be the, you know, Deputy Director of City of Modesto, Firoz Wora. Um, so through him, I learned that this is a process. When a country that you call home gives you an opportunity, then once you have that opportunity, you need to give back. And so that's what I've learned through my family. That's what I try to instill in my kids that, look, you have to give back to your community that you call home, whether through social services, whether it be part of Love Modesto events, whether you go clean up just a sidewalk or help your neighbors. That's what I like to do. And this is truly a home and I'm so passionate about this district and this town that I want to have and raise my family for generations to come. I want to set an example because, you know, after two thousand, two thousand sixteen election, when I heard President Trump with his negative rhetoric towards Muslims, that kind of put, you know, fire and the fuel in my fire, so to speak, that I wanted to change that mindset. So I am the first Muslim born in India to run for elected office in City of Modesto. So I've already made history regardless of I win or lose. I've already made history because if somebody searches back and says, who was the first Muslim candidate to run for elected office in Modesto? They're going to say Amin Wora. So I want to change that. I want to change the mindset and show the people that, look, not all one point six billion people of Muslim faith are all radicals or are, 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 are wrong. I just want to show that we are truly loved, loving and law-abiding citizens who want to serve and, 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 and raise their family in this community.
Thank you very much. Jennifer?
So again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity and for learning more about who I am and why I'm running. I have spent my entire career listening to the community and being out there, doing outreach and really getting to know, um, who our community is here in the Central Valley, people from all walks of life. And I continue to do that with my position now and I will continue to do that after. So again, you know, I am very passionate about my community. I am passionate about what I do. Um, my children, I'm raising my children here. I want them to be proud of where they come from and where they are. And, you know, if you would like to learn more about campaign, jenniferformodesto.com. Um, please reach out. I would love to earn your vote. I would love to earn your support. And, um, you know, again, I'm just very passionate about my community and listening and being there and advocating for those that don't normally have a voice. And uh, if elected, I will continue to do that, just at a different level. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. We're very pleased and fortunate to have three such, uh, fine people who have done so much already to engage in helping this community to become better and, um, and who will continue to as well. We appreciate your discussing these issues with us. Viewers, be sure to tune in for more debates at mobby.com throughout this month of September and up until the November third election. Tomorrow, we will interview candidates for Modesto City Council District Three and next week, we will have those running for District Six. Yesterday, our forum featured candidates for Series Mayor and next week, we will also have those running to represent the Modesto Irrigation District. Thank you, everyone, and good evening.